We're calling the meeting of October 7th, 2020 to order. Do you have the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, in the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit.
Microphone. There's a report today with one of our principals that we had 24 days of school. Doesn't seem like very many. That seems about five weeks. Sure seems like a lot longer. Obviously, probably everybody else who's been in school that day. But it's fun, it's gonna fly by. Get a nice break next week. Oh, so the first order of business is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the agenda for the meeting and any items of non-controversial nature in order to free up our time here, so we have more time for discussion. But I did have a question about... Which one was it? The attendance policy that is on the consent agenda, the monitoring report for student attendance. So can we pull that off of the consent agenda? And then I will move to approve the consent agenda without K6, the monitoring report for governance policy, EEL 18, student attendance, and I'll ask my question at that time. Is there a second?
Second.
No, sir. Thank you, Kelly. We're gonna give a tear.
I didn't see your mind answer, that's why I was like, oh, probably not. You may be wrong.
Any further comments or questions about that consent agenda? Does he?
Thank you. Mr. Armando?
Hi.
Mrs. Alter?
Hi.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Hi.
Mrs. Jarno?
Hi.
Dr. Long?
Hi.
Mrs. Stecker?
Hi.
Mrs. Tivar Kunis?
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. I believe that we have no public participation that was submitted within the guidelines. It is very important that we have your name and phone number and contact information, so we can put you in the notes in the meeting. Unfortunately, part of our legal responsibility to have all that information. So that takes us then to the report of the superintendent.
Thanks, Madam President. I did want to point out, we did receive a comment from the public, and we'll distribute that to board members that need that comment, which is camera-y on my back, so we get a form petition from the person who's sitting there. So look for that soon. So into my report. Perhaps I'm not pushing the chair.
The side button?
Close one. We'll get that going. So while we're pulling that up, I'll go ahead and start with the report. First thing on there would be just an update that we're managing COVID-19 cases and the communications associated with those. The board stays pretty well informed about those as they happen, and we'll provide some additional details about this in the COVID-19 update later. And the agenda would note that this is taking up a significant amount of my time, and especially of some of my team members, who manage the relations with public health and the communications team. So to Monas and Dan, thank you for the many hours that you're putting in after hours to your team members for keeping everybody well informed. So thank you. I'll be out in schools is next. You heard from principals early this afternoon about the structure that they have in their elementary schools. And occasionally, myself and staff members from the district office have gone to help schools. I've done some recess duty. And let me tell you, recess duty with kindergarteners is very different than the supervision I used to provide as a principal at high school. So a whole different set of needs, very eye-opening for me. But I appreciate the opportunity to go to GES and help them out. We'll be on call as necessary. It is all hands on deck at that level. And if they end up with two or three people out, and we can't fill those subpositions, then we've got to come in and provide support, or we're gonna have to shut down schools because we might not have personnel to come manage them. Up next is the ECCA Equity and Diversity Committee. We met a couple Fridays ago and had a very productive meeting. We clearly identified some of the misconceptions around the identity of the school. Want to thank some of the folks in the room who were at that meeting. Shell Stecker, thank you for being there. Dr. Katie Jarnow was there. Dan Doctorow was present. So we're really working with, hand-in-hand with ECCA, to change some communications. We'll be working with Kim Walter this week to review the handbook and the website to see if there's any elements in there that may be off-putting or maybe are propagating some misconceptions about school. So with that, I will continue. I think one of the important things to reference is that we are seeking the advice of a marketing firm that is owned by and targeted to the Latinx community. So they've got significant expertise in Eagle County, and we think that they're gonna be a powerful link for us, a powerful bridge to reach the audience that we're trying to reach in changing the demographics that would be ECCA to better reflect the rest of our community. Next slide. Can this bad boy work? Oh, went the wrong way, but it's working. Standby. There we go. Levels meetings and ad team. These continue to be very productive. I think I mentioned every meeting, but the way that we restructured those this year to have levels meetings separately and then add team meetings at a different time and a different week, and doing them all virtually has worked out really well. We're cutting down on a lot of drag time. And we're cutting down on a lot of mileage. We were reimbursing principals. So people's time is much more efficient. And we're finding in those small groups of levels that we're really getting some productive discussion. So happy that we're having those meetings and that they're as productive as they are. Also wanted to give you an update on the RISE grant. This is the grant that was most recently mentioned by the governor and CDE. We have... I correspond with the grant writer on this process almost daily to refine the language of that proposal, to adjust the budget and prepare that application. We are on target to meet that October 17th application deadline. And we're doing what we would consider a consortium application, which means that we're doing it and recognizing that we have many community partners. Chief among those would be Colorado Mountain College and then some of our youth-serving nonprofits. So by referencing that we have strong collaborative relationships with all these different organizations in our community, it strengthens our application and I think gives us a better chance at giving the dollars that we're searching for. So one key point to note about that is the funding period is November 2020 to September 2022. So it's not just for this school year. So it would extend into the following school year. And our hope is to gain some additional funds so that we can hire the interventionists that are needed for outreach at each school to find those students who are disengaged, who are not tuning in remotely, who have really been left behind in all the changes that we've made to the school year. So we'd like to get one at each school. And then in our schools that are in a hybrid schedule, we're gonna need several of those individuals. So it's a sizable grant. We'll have that budget finalized here in the next week and have that application out the 17th. So wanted you to be aware that that process is continuing. Another important event in the last week was to meet with the Eagle County Education Association. Adele Wilson, who serves on the negotiations committee, and I are now meeting monthly with not just the president of ECCA, excuse me, ECEA, but their entire leadership board. So that includes four of their members plus their regional rep from CDE. So it's a large group. But I think it's important, as you heard principals again say this afternoon, that teachers are stressed and they're working really, really hard. And it's important that we monitor their concerns, that they have a voice in the direction of the district, and that we work to find resolutions to their concerns. So some of the things that came out of our most recent meeting that you should be aware of. We've ensured that all teachers have the option to participate in parent-teacher conferences virtually. So some will choose to be in-person, but if they prefer to do it virtually, that option exists for their safety and to cut down their exposure to the broader community. Again, so we can keep our schools open and keep them safe and healthy. Another issue that came up is as we have cohorts transitioned to remote, at the 11th hour, they are being asked to change their lesson plans from in-person instruction to remote. And as you're aware from the communications I've been sending out, that has tended to happen on Sundays. I don't know why. As an aside, I did talk to public doctors this week and asked them, "Are you getting your batch results on Sundays? Is this a weekly thing? Or are we just unlucky?" And they assured me that they get results daily, and that we are just unlucky. So we hope in the future that we get results on days other than Sunday. But coming back to the main point, when teachers find out late in the evening on a Sunday, that the next day they're expected to come into school with a totally different lesson plan than what they thought they were coming in with, that puts a lot of stress on them and requires them to put in some additional planning time on the weekend. So in working with the business department, we believe we're gonna be able to provide them with an additional stipend in the event that their classroom or cohort gets transitioned to remote and they need to make a change in their lesson plans. This will be news to association members. We haven't shared this detail with them yet, so I'd like to provide them with full details about that before I disclose anymore publicly. I did want you to be aware that we honor that time. We're aware of the work that they've put in, and we want to provide that stipend. And we'll be able to do that retroactively for those by going back to the Gibson Creek incident back in September. We'll be able to provide that stipend for all of our previous incidents. And one thing that is important to note is it would not be the intent to do this if the district switches to remote. In the event that the whole district does because of a change in KPI, what we would do is take a day of pause because all kinds of systems are gonna need to change. So we would take a day of pause so that we're willing to allow to everybody. So at this point, that's just for those people whose classrooms or cohorts are changing because we're expecting an immediate turnaround the next day so that kids can continue in school. A couple of other points that came out of our last meeting. We wanted to ensure that all teachers are receiving planning time that meets or exceeds that, which is in the collective bargaining agreement. That's 300 minutes per week. We understand that in this environment, they're actually needing more than that. So on Tuesday of this week, just yesterday, at ad team, I worked with principals to develop a template that I'm asking them to complete that shows a full inventory of planning time for their building schedule. So that way, we can compare that to individual teachers who are feeling like they're not getting the time and try to figure out where in their schedule there's some discrepancies and align those with policy to make sure that they feel like they've got it. And the last thing that we worked with principals on related to ECEA concerns is Wednesdays. Teachers really need those Wednesdays to plan individually and to plan collaboratively. They need the expertise of their team members to produce lessons that cover the comprehensive needs of the kids. What we're finding is that there are other meetings that are getting scheduled into Wednesdays that are conflicting with that planning time. So asking principals to be very mindful of all those additional meetings that are happening on Wednesdays so that we can make secure that planning time that teachers need to be productive. And the last thing on here, I just wanted to give some kudos to Sandy Munchler and the finance department. We did get our financial audit back from school year 18, '19. So CDE takes several months to come back and revisit and do the audit. But an uneventful audit is a good audit. So we don't get big accolades, but we also did not get any wrist slaps or reprimands or anything to do differently. So Sandy, kudos to your team again for clean, accurate, timely budgeting. And we know that our taxpayer dollars are being well-maintained and you're a good steward of our funds. So thank you and your team. That is all for my report. Thank you.
Yes, there's something... The level of appreciation for all the extra time and the Sunday evenings can't really be expressed in words. It's nice to be able to help the teachers out a little bit. I'm not trying to ruin what you can do for all the folks here in this room, but hopefully you're working on that amongst yourselves. Board of course, Fernando, we're ready to start. Did you have a question?
Sure, thank you. Let's see, last week I had... I was able to join the Eagle Valley High School virtual staff meeting. So thank you, Go By A Hand, for allowing me to be there. It was pretty amazing. Sunday? Yeah, Sunday. I was able to go to the Mountain Valley Horse Rescue McCoy with the Bright Future Foundation. Let me tell you, it was amazing. It was pretty cool. We got to learn a little more about horses, and then we also had to brush them and to give them treats. And, you know, it was pretty cool. We also had to clean their stables, if that's what you call. So it was amazing. I really had a fun time. On Monday, I did my first GED Spanish class live on Facebook and on Zoom meeting. So we did have a few participants. At one point, we had about 10 or so, and it's still there. So if anyone wants to go watch it and any comments and whatnot, it's... I thought it was cool. And then yesterday, I went to the public recognition with the Eagle Valley Commissioners for my 404-year award. And I just want to thank everyone that was able to go and support me. And also, Chicken Andrew, the music player that he drove all the way from Bell just to come over and give a hand at the time. Other than that, it's Wednesday, middle of the week, so I still have a couple more things. So then I'm finally back on day shift. So I think that bright thing on the sky is weird, but yeah, thank you.
So I, on Monday, was invited to be a guest speaker at the Family Leadership Training Institute. I got to share my journey here in the United States and got to hear from all the participants and other projects in the community. So it was a great experience just to be there. So thanks for inviting me. I logged into the H chat parent VR day. Thank you, mountain youth. I love the chats they do. This one was about break free from stress, and I got some great tips, especially young kids. So that was great. Thank you. Still helping at Eagle Valley Elementary with recess as much as I can. And I feel sad, you know, kindergarten, first grade kids, it's so much fun. So I still do that. I got to do a PT and A meeting also with Eagle Valley Elementary. And it was great just to see new ideas on how to help the schools since the world is not really happening and we don't know how we expect it to happen. So just trying to figure things out. And Ife came and talked to us about 5B. So that was great to get info again so that we can keep popping to the community about that. And then today, I got to attend two staff meetings, okay? First at Eagle Valley Elementary and then at Redfield Elementary. And we just gave them our gratitude for everything they're doing. And then we talked to them about 5B. And we asked teachers if there was anything they wanted to share with us. And a couple of them spoke out. And mainly, what they said is that they're very appreciative of the one days and the time for extra planning. And teachers said also that he likes helping us better with the whole technology deployment. So it was great just to hear those couple comments. And we told them if they want to like email and we asked more comments, they said.
I also did a couple of school visits. Both at Edwards Elementary, which was virtual last week, and then this morning at Bad Mountain High School, which was great, except that I'm not sure they were awake and I didn't get many questions. But I also helped with Bad Mountain High School Picture Day. It seemed like a great idea until I realized I interacted with probably 300 kids in a day. But it was fine. It was fun to see everybody. And then there was a CASB board meeting, which if you're interested, I can send you minutes. And also a CASB Equity Committee meeting, where they're very interested in some of the things that we already started. And there are other districts that are maybe ahead of us, but then there are others that are just getting going to an interesting year or where different districts in the state are at work.
Okay. At CMC, we're working on spring. That affects the school district in a lot of different ways. I had to give a report today to my dean about the classes that I'm kind of supervising. And we have... I have more dual enrollment classes than I do on-campus classes. I have about 475 students in 36 classes at the high schools. I only have about 200 students on campus at CMC. A lot of it has to do with the motor program, also the math programs and the science programs. So part of my job, I have to do observations of the teachers when they're teaching those classes. So I've been doing observations at Eagle Valley of the new, we have a new biology instructor and also a new full-time math instructor. And we are asking these teachers to do a lot. And we found out that today from elementary schools as well. But it is difficult. I was zooming into what was happening in the classroom, but really what was happening on the screen. And that instructor, the math class, it was like a developmental math class. She had three students in the classroom with her, but then she also had 10 students on the screen. And she was getting questions many times from both places. And she's... Amy Poppy was the instructor. She's brand new. And she lives in Leadville. So she's driving a long way sometimes to come to class. And she's a professional. She handles it very, very well. But I've only taught at the grade school and then the high school and then the college level. But we're asking these teachers to do a lot. And I'd like to either start a committee to find some kind of a celebration year-end for teachers, something like that, that we could do special for them or in some way or in some way, shape, or form. But I think a celebration for the finishing of this year for those teachers would be fantastic. If there's some way that we can budget that or manage that. I'm always impressed with the observations I do at the high school, especially sometimes the instructors are our instructors at CMC. Sometimes they're at the high school. But they have very specific things they need to do for the CMC crediting bodies. And they really do a fantastic job of that. Monday, I had to go to, I went to the Family Leadership Training Institute in Edwards at the Community Center. And it was interesting being on the panel because there were people who had been in classes for a long time. And I know, Fernando, you went through this training as well. So they were there for, since 5 o'clock that day. And I think it's a 10-week training program? 20? Well, I'm sorry. 20 weeks. It's a long time. But it's great to hear the projects that they're getting involved in. And they had some questions for us. And they're really looking for people to help. So it was great, I think, for our community that there's a training program to try to be leaders to take on projects to just help the communities. And it was a great experience. Matt Scher was there. I think Mike, one of the fire department chiefs, was there. Mike or Nick, I can't remember right now. Sorry. And then Amy from Avon, she was the councilwoman from Avon. A great time and a lot of good information and a lot of good connections that we were able to make. Tuesday, I was at the staff meeting. I think, thank God, Michelle was there. She kind of took over and mentioned all the things that we were supposed to mention. Mostly thank you to the teachers for the work that they're doing. And also a shout-out for 5B. And I caught the just extreme tail end of the meeting this morning. I was running a little bit late. I came in and Michelle was standing outside talking with someone. And I was getting ready to go away, and she says, "We're already done." So I didn't have to do anything for that one. And finally, a quick update. What was that?
They were very quiet.
Okay. A quick update on esports. I think the lone voice championing esports in the valley recently. But tomorrow is the first day of tournament play. So anyone really in the world who wants to play Rocket League or League of Legends or Overwatch can start... If you start a team at your high school or your college, you can play anyone else in the world to be involved in tournament play. That will go on, I believe, for two months. And then they'll start putting people in brackets and they'll start going through the elimination rounds. But our team at Edwards CMC is Rocket League. So we have three players tomorrow morning. I'm driving to get the components for our computers that we'll have to build. And we'll build those tomorrow or Friday. And then we'll start competing in esports. I know Red Canyon is also involved in it. I don't know where they are in their planning or their building or anything like that. But they're gonna be competing probably against us as well. And then Bad Mountain also. So thank you.
Good evening. As Dr. Long mentioned, he and I got to visit with ECCA during their staff meeting earlier this week. And always great to hear directly from the teachers on what's going on in their buildings. They really expressed their sincere appreciation this year more than ever for feeling like a collective partner with the school district and particularly around some of the professional development opportunities coming out of the IT department and teacher leader and training opportunities. They just were so grateful. And also interesting to hear how they've been able to tackle having kids in the school five days a week. I also got to catch up with Dana Whalen, our wellness coordinator, serving on the wellness committee. It was just a great chance. She's still newish in that role to get to learn a little bit more about her and the wellness plan. That's an area that I'm just so excited about, the work that's going on with and plans to come. I got to join the Eagle Valley Behavioral Health Advisory Committee and just stay in touch with all of those partners that are doing great work in the community for our students and families. Along with Superintendent Pullman, I got to attend the ECCA Equity and Diversity meeting. And it was really a helpful kickoff to the plans this year in outreach and communication and working together on recruitment. Mind Springs Health had their annual meeting, and I got to pop in for part of that and hear about some of their growth and expansion this year to meet the needs of the community. And then lastly, on the mountain youth end, we've had some programming going on. Like Lou mentioned, we had a stress reduction H chat parent this week. And it really was like a practical application workshop style. And so would encourage anybody who was not specific to being a parent, anybody that is feeling stressed or overwhelmed these days, to check that out. The recordings on Facebook Live. There were a lot of great tips shared. And again, getting to work through a personal plan for yourself. And then our Spanish strand of H chat parents, Apprendizos, also focusing on managing stress through the pandemic, had a great panel last week with a couple of professionals. So really trying to take advantage of a lot of these amazing supports and partners working together for our students and things.
I've had a pretty quiet... We compared all of these guys over two weeks. I have been to a couple of staff meetings. I have been to a couple elementary school meetings. I was at Edwards Elementary for a virtual meeting. And I think, again, this is what's being said tonight against Rebecca, and it's our teachers are really happy to be back in the classroom. They're really happy to have students. And they are working really, really, really hard. They've all talked about Wednesdays and how essential it is and how we can possibly be in school four days a week without having that time, that period, that time on Wednesdays to plan. And how, again, Superintendent Pullman talks about it a little bit in his report, but those Wednesdays are really, really, really... They're having easier days on Wednesdays without the kiddos. And we are going to be quick to kiddos. So again, thank you to the teachers. You know, they're all really happy, but they're all really tired and the work's been really hard. So big shout-out to them. And then I went to a Berry Creek Middle School, which was my first middle school staff meeting. So, you know, they're doing things similar. They're in school four days a week. They're in cohorts. But it's a little bit different than at the elementary school level. But again, the sentiments are pretty much the same. And sort of with that, it'll be sort of talking 5B, 5B, 5B. But, you know, shout-out again to how essential 5B is, how hard our staff is working, and how limited our resources are and how everybody sort of needs ideally potentially more teachers to try to pull up what we're doing and not being necessarily enumerated appropriately and supplies and devices and everything. So I think ballots are being mailed out really soon. But Eagle County Friday, I was gonna say. So again, just had to showcase ballot, 5B. It's essential for our planning and our funding. And I've got my mom in town. She flew out. So I've been with her for the past week or so. It's been really nice to have her. And they're really busy. So that's about all I have.
Great. Thanks, everybody, for all the work. The staff meetings are a lot of work scheduling. Thank you, Vizi, for herding all those cats and getting it all organized. But they're so valuable, especially the ones we can get in the room. But the virtual meetings... But the virtual meetings aren't working. And we were able to attend two meetings this morning in one hour without actually having to leave our house. So there was some, you know, efficiency of time there. And the, the messages are consistent across the schools. When I hear reports from my fellow members and then when I've heard it's the same. Grateful to be in school, but hoping they're going to survive through the workload. And I think we'll get the systems dialed in a little bit more. And hopefully everybody will be able to recharge a little bit this next week. That was a better decision than we ever knew when we created that calendar, that we would need this break. Do some agenda planning every other week with the superintendent here next to me. That's just, which is always enjoyable and hopefully we get these meetings dialed in. I wrote the article for the Daily. I don't know if everyone was able to see it on Thursday, but hopefully that'll, if I did, if one person texts me and say, I got my vote, I've got to do. Hopefully that'll help with some of the voting. And then, let's see. So that's, that's about it with that, besides some other thinking. And the facilities email that I received that I have to remember to touch base with Sandy on and make a special reply. I'm going to roll directly into old and new business here because this note here in my report is actually over here. I received two interesting emails that were very similar, but from two totally different quarters about some virtual programming that they wanted me to get on board with. And really, it's not my place. It would be someone over there's place. And the one of them is called, what did I write down? School of Promise. And this is a friend from Rebecca Cotton's from the Carnegie Mellon University, the Heinz College. They're doing their graduate work. And it's a virtual, and buses moving around. So I don't know if anybody wants me to send them this email or if you want to look at it. I mean, I know we're going to be taking more on our plates as for low-income students in schools. And then the other one was a remote learning. Got to find it down here. Called Small World. And they needed someone to support their grant. She's this woman, it's from Cherry Creek High School, 2017 graduate. And now they're at the New York University campus in Abu Dhabi. I didn't realize that New York University had a campus center there, but they do. And they got a great team. And it's a remote service with a global network providing humanitarian problems for students to select mentors from top universities to pair with and online modules to guide students in their problems. So I don't know. It's, I should say, forward those to you, sir? And then you can see if anybody's interested in.
Forward what those to me and I'll take a look.
I mean, there's no.
Figure out who my team is and what to do to.
There's no commitment on our side, but they sent it to me and I was kind of want to say, I'm just really sorry. I can't help you. The people who are actually doing the work are the ones to help you. But also to give a shout out to Carnegie Mellon and the work that they're doing. And they sent me an email because I wrote Rebecca a recommendation to get into that program. And they wanted me to just spread the word about the amazing work that they're doing there. Intelligent action for the future, right? Expertise in analytics set in Heinz, sets Heinz College apart in the areas of cybersecurity, healthcare, future of work, mark cities, arts and entertainment. If anybody is interested in a really amazing forward-thinking graduate program, it's where Rebecca is right now in upstate New York, I think is where it is. So that's my new business and I'll forward those to you. Does anybody have any old business or any other new business that we need to go back to? Go forward with as the agenda? All righty. All right. Mr. Superintendent, we will have the COVID planning accommodation update next.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't actually fill over this whole list of things for next week. Does anyone have anything they want to address more school plans?
Are you going to update us on the school count or wait till?
We are still in the window. So we won't close until tomorrow. So we don't have much more information than we had last time.
Okay.
But we'll have very good information next time.
Right. And that's here on our list of regular sessions. And then we'll also have the Healthy Kids Colorado survey results. We're going to have Michelle give to us and National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Isn't, I don't recognize the mention of that. No, next month.
It is this month, but the proclamation didn't come through the planning group celebrating.
Oh, excellent. Okay. I was, I'm sorry. It's enough to get confused because I spent a bunch of time on Tuesday last week reviewing it, going through the whole thing. I'm like, great. Then I get back to it. I'm like, oh, wait a second, this has been these changes.
Sorry, for a moment, I was going to pull this around this particular time. I'm thinking.
Well, that's good. We have, we need another proclamation for the next week. All right, now I'm going to stop talking now.
All right. So I'll provide you with some updates about information related to COVID incidents in schools. You are aware, but I want to make sure the public is aware that we had two students test positive at Eagle Valley High School. And for each high school student that tests positive, it's averaging about 50 students that end up getting quarantined as a result of that. This particular group at Eagle Valley is a little larger because we also had to include members of the Florida Malteam who were exposed to that students. So that is up to about 140 students, but it's only impacting three teachers. At Edwards Elementary School, we got one classroom and now it's about 15 students. And the EELC has a preschool room, a hall room, which has about 10 students. So other than those rooms, we are still providing in-classroom instruction to about 97% of our students. So we're happy to have classes open and we think our mitigation efforts are working well so far. And again, kudos to the team for all the efforts they've put into this communications and collaboration with public health. The next point that I want to cover, if I could draw your attention to the screens. Can everybody see the screens? Can you see one? Okay. We've got a bit of a challenge that we need to work through. This is the new dial. I assume you've seen the dial. It's been widely shared in the Daily. We have stayed in the yellow zone, which is safer at home, level two concern for a few weeks now. But what we need to do is set the metric for when the district moves into full remote. If you remember the previous plan with the previous KPI, it just had a green, yellow, red zone. And when it crosses into the red zone, that's our threshold to move into full remote. So now we've got an orange level. So we need to determine, do, do we move into full remote at orange or do we still move into it at red? That's where it gets a little tricky. This diagram that you see on here is actually, it's a PDF document that's produced by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. This guidance, this PDF format, they have one for each of the colors of that scale. So there's five different colors, five different pieces of guidance. What I'd like for you to do is see that rectangle at the top that's red. It's hard to read. So what I'm going to do is focus in on, on that. And you can see what it says. So this is the green. This is the lowest level. It says P12 schools, the recommendation is in-person, in-person is suggested. So now we'll proceed to blue level. So this is, this is level one of safer at home. And the recommendation for P12 schools is in-person suggested or hybrid and remote as appropriate. So basically if you get a case and you need to quarantine a cohort or two, you could go remote. So now let's move up to yellow, which is where we are right now. So take a look at that P12 guidance in the yellow zone, in-person, hybrid or remote as appropriate, which is exactly what we're doing. So now let's get into orange. Here's where I'm going to need your opinion. So focusing on that red rectangle in orange on this particular guidance from Colorado Public Health, it says remote suggested, limited in-person as appropriate. So remote suggested in orange. And, and they're, they're unambiguous in red that it's remote, period. So here's our challenge. Colorado Department of Health also produces this document. And if you go down to the red rectangle for P12 schools, this recommends remote or hybrid suggested, limited in-person as appropriate. So in this box, they add or hybrid. So here we get two different messages coming from Colorado Department of Public Health. So here's the various positions that you should be aware of as a board. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment recommends remote or hybrid learning if the county moves into orange. Eagle County Public Health, after working with our local public health advisors, they recommend that we stay in our modified in-person learning model in orange. And I, I pushed them to give me some rationale for that because I know I'm going to have to explain it to you and I'm going to have to explain it to parents and teachers. Their rationale is that schools have remained stable as other factors in the community have changed. So they're particularly looking at 4th of July, they're looking at Labor Day. And as we have tourists incoming or as we have our own population traveling, we do see some rise in COVID cases, but what we don't see is a rise in positivity in our schools. So what has happened in the community hasn't necessarily translated to in schools because look at the second rationale, they believe our mitigation strategies are working. The fact that we require mask wearing of everybody in the school and that we have changed up our in-person structures to allow a lot more space, smaller cohorts, that we're, we're doing a very good job of mitigating disease spread in our schools. So it's there in that we could remain in our modified remote learning. The Eagle County Education Association, who I recently met with, they believe that we should be full remote learning if we're in orange. And they just think that that's because there's going to be a lot of disease spread and they're concerned about the safety of teachers. So totally understand that. So my recommendation moving forward is this, and I want your opinion on this because we're going to need to have a, a position that we share with the association, with the public, with our team, principals. And I want to know if you think this is a sensible position that's backed up by our, our reality or if you have other thoughts. Maybe we could look at it a different way if you have a different perspective. Our recommendation is really based on our ability to have adequate subs. If we are able to hire, train and deploy adequate subs, we could attempt to keep schools open during the orange phase. So for us, the, the real factor there is we are already almost at our threshold of unfilled subpositions. So the fact that my team and many members of learning services are in buildings all the time, covering jobs and not doing the work that we should be doing, that's going to have some long-term implications for the function of the district. If we continue to have to do that and/or we have to start shutting down isolated schools or classrooms or grade levels because we can't support them with staff, then system-wide, we really think that should be still open. Because when we're operating at this level and every single person is covering every single class, that's unsustainable. It's unsustainable. Other work is not getting done. People are feeling pressured to come to work when they're not well because they know that things can't be covered or that classes are going to get canceled. So there's an immense pressure for the system to try to keep operating at this level, which is hard to sustain. So after I'm done, I'm going to ask Adele Wilson to provide an update on our efforts to hire subs to inform your thinking. So the second point on here is if the district can't hire, train and deploy adequate subs, then we need to move to 100% remote in the orange phase. So for now, our, my position is we monitor the unfilled subsubs. We make a determination after a few weeks. So we're going to watch here for the next few weeks. And when we see the fruits of our guest teacher hiring push, then we can make a determination. So with that, I'd like to ask Adele, we're going to kind of jump out of order here because I think her information is necessary for us to, to voice opinions on, on how we progress. And Adele, before you go, I just want to note the asterisk at the bottom here, that adequate in terms of number of subs is a moving target. So there's not like a specific number, you know, like if we know that we can hire 25 subs, we're going to be great. Tomorrow it might be 25 and on Friday it might be 35. So we don't know what that number is, but Adele can speak to that a little bit more. So let me pause, collect your thoughts on this and let's hear from Adele. How are we doing in our effort to hire more subs?
So we, with our recruitment effort, with the ads in the Daily and notices going out to parents and posting on Facebook, et cetera, we have 20 applicants in the pool, which is fantastic. Please know that it's not a quick flip of the switch and they apply and then they're hired. They need to hold a minimum, a one-year substitute authorization, which does take some time. But out of those 20, we have seven of them who will be attending new employee orientation on Monday, the 19th of October and going through Mary Ann's guest teacher training. So they would be set to deploy and walk beginning on Tuesday, the 20th. So that's pretty fantastic. But like Phil said, the number, you know, 25 could be today. But then we have an average of 40 jobs a day that we need to have filled. We presently have about 100 guest teachers. However, they're not all active on a daily basis because this is not necessarily their first job. It might be their fill-in job. They might have a primary job elsewhere. So sometimes we feel we could have a thousand guest teachers and that still would not necessarily be enough. But I'm super excited that seven of them would be able to start on the Tuesday of the break.
That's good progress, Adele, when you remember sharing that. So we had the, we had a headline in the Daily. We've had hiring incentives published a few days. We've had all of this word of mouth trying to find people on our grid. So we are seeing some fruit from the Jeffersons. So at this point, I'd like to hear your thoughts. If you, if you want to sit on it and, and send me your thoughts later via email, you're welcome to do that. But I do want board input before we, we make a decision on, on what that threshold is. And, and your input will be brought to the association and to the leadership team. And all, all those voices will collaborate to figure out what's the best decision for the district moving forward. Do you want to care to share thoughts now or prefer to send them to me later?
I have one question for Adele. Do you know what pushes us from yellow to orange, like what that threshold is? Is there a magic number per week? Is it a percentage? Is it our, what are you showing us back?
There, there are. So with the new KPI, there's three factors that contributes to the metric. The first factor is incidents. So how many new incidents have there been in a rolling 14-day average? That's the one that we probably have the least ability to, to control locally. That really depends on the behaviors of individuals and the behavior of our guests who visit our community. The second one that we do have a little bit more control over is the positivity rate of testing. So we're fortunate that, that Dale Health and Colorado Mountain Medical have established a very, I mean, extremely robust testing program for Eagle County. In our efforts to identify testing resources for schools, we've learned that the testing that we have in Eagle County is among the best in the country. I mean, it is top-notch. Any of our staff or students who are exhibiting symptoms can get a rapid test with a result in 15 minutes. That's almost unprecedented in most places in the country. So in terms of positivity rate, we are testing a lot of people. And, and our number of positive tests, because of all the tests that we are providing, is relatively small. I don't see that being a huge impact for us. The third factor is the capacity of our healthcare system. And as you guys have monitored updates from, from Dale Health and from the county, the hospital in Dale has transitioned many rooms to, to be suited with the equipment and the air pressure and the ventilators to manage severe COVID patients. And in the last several weeks, they've only had one or two at a time. So they have much more capacity to handle extreme COVID cases than they have coming in the door, much more. So I think factor two and three, we have well in hand in Eagle County. Factor one is the one that, that could be the threshold that, that kicks us into orange or red. So as an example of when we might move from yellow to orange, I asked that question to the public health earlier this week when I spoke to them. And they gave me the example of the incident rate near 4th of July or two weeks after 4th of July, when, when we ticked up to around 375 would be about the rate that we would have to cross over when we get into orange. Does that answer your question?
I have a question also. Wasn't there the first round when we were talking about when the KPI only ended three measures? There was another statement that the only thing that would cause us to close schools was if we ran out of teachers or we couldn't adequately staff. So that's still in the facts, right? So I think, I'm thinking of that being a separate kind of thing because we can't, we don't know. I'm thinking of that being a a separate kind of thing because we we can't, we don't know that. But I mean, it could still happen that all seven of these don't show up or they can't do it, they get sick or whatever. So that's still a contingency and it's not really based on anything other than we have enough people. Um, the thing I was thinking about when they were talking about the difference in the colors was. I support following the the, you know, the Department of Public Health's recommendations. Uh, it seems to me that that's been our, that's been our kind of touchdown. We do want to go by what they. What they suggest and what they are, you know, they are the ones who are going to pull the plug on the masks and the social distancing. So we, I feel like we do well when we follow them.
To be clear, are you indicating that our local public health, we do want to follow?
The, the one that you're mentioning here.
The one in Eagle County?
Yes, yeah, Eagle County, yeah, Eagle County. I'm saying, I I would support um, full remote in the red on the new KPI scale. I think too, another way that I would like to support that argument is, I think the risk now, it it doesn't seem as. As dangerous as it was at first. And the first round, the first wave was. No one knew what was going, what to expect. It was like a, a school of 300, very like sharks were coming, you know what I mean? Now we realize it's probably not 300 sharks after us, maybe only 30 or 40. So I I feel like the risk is is not so dangerous to stay in as it was at first. I mean, we all look at the, you know, the 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 number of cases and the the shaped curve and it's it's just fewer. And going forward and that's been um, that everyone gone, has gone through the same kind of uh waves that we did. It's a huge wave and a smaller wave. Uh, we don't know what, if there is going to be a third or fourth wave, but it just seems less risky to me now to stay in. Uh, there's hope, maybe um, hyperbole or hope, I don't know which, but there, a a vaccine is not. So far away now as it used to be, it seems like to me as well. So I would support going in the red for those reasons.
I certainly appreciate that.
Uh, I feel that. It's a bit confusing for a level, a lot of us to say that we follow public health orders, but then we have three. Different um approaches to, based on Eagle County, Colorado and what was that other one?
Two, two different ones from state public health.
Yeah, so.
Slightly different.
And since we're now getting into the very minute differences of uh, whether it's orange or whether it's red or wanting to do it or not. I feel that regardless, we still need to make a decision on it and we have to look at for our community. Now with that said, I don't want to panic anyone if that's something that we're going to cause for making a decision like that. But then also I don't want to minimize the problem because I still want to make sure that we do understand that we are following public health's orders that. Even if we don't like the mask or even if we don't agree with something, we still have to use. Keep a certain level of safety throughout the schools with our staff, with our teachers, with our students and. I would say that if we. Change that to fully hybrid or fully remote, I'm sorry, fully remote for the red. It would be more willing or more appealing to people that say, yeah, maybe you're overreacting on the orange rather than the the red. So uh, in my opinion, I'll just go forward with fully remote on red. But with the sense that orange is still a a danger zone. It's still something that we're not minimizing the yellow for the orange or the red for the orange.
I agree. Um, sort of feel like we had three, you know, sort of three equal quadrants. And now if we go to five, we've got lower. The threshold to having to go to full remote. And I think we all believe that having kids in school, even if it's only two days a week at the high school level is. Far, far superior to having them full remote. Um, so. I understand that if, I mean, that we go on a hard line and say, you know, if it's. Orange, we do this, and if it's red, we do this. And I feel like if it's red, clearly we need to be in remote. If it's orange. I mean, I feel like I lean towards keeping them open. Now, obviously, if we have. One cases in one school and, you know, things go crazy. Um, or we don't have the teachers to staff them or any of those other situations like that that would cause us to need to go remote. That we would be prepared to do that, but I I would hate to just, orange is remote.
So that brings up a, an interesting concept that we haven't explored too much and it's really just the extension of the idea that. We keep as many buildings open as we can keep open and keep regular school for as many kids as we can for as long as we can. So, yeah, to your point, like if we end up in a place where there is a a concentration of absences of of staff members or students. Maybe we consider shutting down one, two, three schools instead of district wide. So. That that's going to create some. That will create its own challenges in our community because nobody, uh, no family is isolated to one school in one town. We've got, you know, families all over this valley. We live in one place and work in another and kids go to schools in different places and. To shut down one kid's school and the other one is in session and the family has to go, parents have to go somewhere to work. I mean, that's going to. I'm anticipating that's going to be a tough one. Uh, but it's one that we could use it.
I agree. I mean, I think with an eye towards keeping kids in school as much as we can safely. That we look at all the situations and if one school has a real problem, then that school. Certainly needs to be on remote, but if we're not seen in other schools, it would be a shame to lose those days of in-person learning.
Thank you.
Uh, those are are my thoughts as well. I think that we've learned in the past 24 days of in-school learning and. From what we're seeing with families that have started virtually and come back, what we've seen from um colleagues in other parts of the state looking to our district leadership to. Understand how we've been able to do this, that the formula we have now overall seems to be working and we know that keeping kids in school safely is the best that we can do. So I fully support in the orange, keeping as many kids in schools as possible. And we worked so hard to create these plans of when we get to a point when we have to. Quarantine a, a group of some size. So we rely on that for the orange. Um, and I also really appreciate all of the hard work in trying to recruit more guest teachers. Especially with that moving target, it can't be easy and um. I I think, yeah, for the recommendation that Superintendent Coleman has up, we need to continue to focus efforts there so that. Um, we can plan towards some of those unanticipated um staff needs as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Um, yeah, I agree also. Like if you look at the red zone, yeah, it's too full remote, but. Or in the orange, I would agree that we need to keep uh, kids at school as much as we can and just take it, pay by, pay by case. Classroom, a whole school, whatever that is, that try and keep them in school as long as we can.
I agree. I think that the chances of us having to close schools or classrooms because of lack of staff could happen even if we're in the yellow. Even if we're in the green, we don't have the control of that if it just happens to be a pocket. So um, one of my points of pride was that we never have to close a district again. Ideally, with maybe four schools, which will be, you know, not, not go over well, it's not equitable, but if that's just the reality, but that's. All the other kids are still giving the best that they can do. And I kind of wish if you could flip back with the, I think when the tourist season comes and the. And the people who who come, we may see uptick in testing in Eagle County over the winter. Like, but that's if somebody comes from other places in the world and they go to our hospital and they get tested. That means our county data is going to go up. So the county, no? Is it only people who live here?
Yeah, our KPI only includes our residents. Uh, and so if you were from somewhere else and you got tested in Eagle County, it goes back to the report for wherever you are from.
But what, so.
If, when they go back, but our report still shows people who are here who caught it elsewhere.
If they live here.
Yeah.
Yeah, our report.
Oh, so if you can, so what if those people who come here and maybe catch a fever? I mean, I have no idea, but.
So if you're from Florida and you come skiing and you get COVID and you get tested here, it's actually reported in your county in Florida.
All right, well, I I, I guess what my point is, probably we're going to see lower rates of infection in our schools. Hopefully, than across the bigger picture with the people who are working with tourists and out of the resort community. And so I, that's why we uh, support this staying in our hybrid model in the orange level.
So, oh, on those lines, what's the situation? I assume if a parent who works in the tourism industry and is, ends up getting it. Their own children who live with them, just those kids quarantined. And the next level is their class, which unless the kid themselves is tested positive, those kids can stay in school. So as we get more parents who clearly are going to be exposed to more as tourists are here and people are working more and. I'm just wondering how that trickles down into our schools.
Yeah, so whoever is living with a person who is positive is in quarantine as well. Uh, for the, for the duration of the quarantine, they're not necessarily the people that they're associated with. Unless they become symptomatic and they become symptomatic and we can conduct contact tracing and see how long the distance of time was. Between when they were symptomatic and the last time we saw their friends or classmates. Well, that's accurate. Melissa's mentioned on this stuff, I'm watching from the distance. That feedback was really helpful. Uh, I think that with the rationale from uh, Eagle County Public Health and the comments that you made. Uh, with the potential flexibility of 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 closing down schools where we see hotspots to still try and maintain school for as many others as possible. It's uh, I I think the direction that we'll go with the association and district leadership team and we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? If if not, I'll move on to others on the team that have some COVID reports to update us on. Okay, uh, Mr. Doc, do you want to share with us some of the new efforts around communications?
So one of the new things that we have recently launched is a top-of-mind awareness campaign on our radio stations. Uh, these are rotating radio commercials uh, that thank our community for their cooperation in helping us keep schools open. By complying with uh, our layers of protection. And also reminding them that it's important that we continue to stay vigilant to uh, to those layers of protection so that we can. Uh, kids in school. And again, it's a PSA-style uh, series of commercials. And uh, the top of mind awareness idea is just that it circulates often enough to keep it in the top of people's minds and they're not forgetting it. Uh, the other thing that we've recently done is we uh, sent out a COVID update newsletter that went to about 7,200. Uh, staff and parent emails and it provided an update on the four most recent updates from public health. Uh, to help our community understand uh, sort of the. Big issues that are changing, but also some of the detailed rules that are happening. Uh, so both of those um, seem to be well-received and can, and can make incremental improvements as we go along. Any questions?
Yeah, could you, I think that communication you're talking about, um, it said something about um, if a kid. Tests positive, now we're going to start not quarantining the whole classroom by seeing.
Yeah, what, yeah, what public health has recognized is that. The wearing of masks has been very efficient, uh, very effective uh, in limiting spread in schools. Uh, furthermore, the the small class sizes that we have in elementary uh, and distance that's even existed in high school, middle school rooms. They they don't believe that it's necessary to do a blanket quarantine for a classroom when one student has tested positive if. They can be assured that everybody was wearing masks all the time. If there was adequate distance between students or if they were outside for for most of the day or some of the day. Uh, then they can rule out some of those kids that were in the same section or class period when they were outside. Uh, or when they had greater distance. So what they're recognizing is that they have a thorough process to contact trace. And when people participate, and I think that's important to note, when they participate. And they're forthright and honest about all the situations that they've been in and who they've been close to. They can be very targeted in who they quarantine. If people do not uh, participate honestly and openly. Uh, in that contact tracing process, then they're issuing more blanket quarantines. Thank you.
Yes, that's pretty much what I was going to say.
In the newsletter, we we described it as as focused quarantine. Um, and it it, it does allow them to be more precise if they have that cooperation.
And we haven't started that yet. So unfortunately, Eagle Valley High School was not under um, that protocol at the time that we had to do it. If we were, um, you know, with these significantly less students, uh, you know, reduced by like 80% or more. Of the number of students we had to quarantine, which subsequently would help with that orange. Um, you know, because that availability of subs for classes, we wouldn't need as many. Um, and we're already under where the staff is now under the Eagle County um workforce restrictions for COVID, which means. That the teacher does not necessarily have to quarantine if we quarantine the students. As long as the teacher is able to express that they were masked, they're six feet away, that they have the proper um hygiene was practiced. Uh, and so with Eagle Valley High, this test week, I think we had nine staff and all but three um returned to school. Uh, so that they can serve their students that were in the other part of the hybrid model. And I think um, we gave them the option to, if they didn't feel comfortable, if they felt that they could have been exposed, then they are staying home. And so like I said, that's three out of the nine. And I think going forward, that that's really going to help us um, be able to keep more students in school and more staff in school. Uh, another thing too, is we are really trying to push with the staff so that if anyone is feeling sick or they feel that they could have been, you know, they have a student that had it possibly, but then. Um, we don't want them to rush out the next day and get tested. Because the chance of that being accurate is not great. And then we're pending tests and and that kind of thing. So. Anyone that's sick, if you have a student that's sick or, uh, you know, wait that full 24-hour period, see if those symptoms showed up. And save the testing for the the people that are really, really sick or um, the ones that. May have been exposed as as far as a very positive exposure. So those are kind of some new things that we're recommending to families. And as Superintendent Coleman said, um, we've. We have zero uh, student-to-student transmission at this point. And uh, student-to-teacher, teacher-to-student, vice versa. So we are very confident that what we're doing is keeping students and staff safe in our schools, right? And that's a testament to our cleaning staff, to the diligence of our teachers, to all the hard work that goes into it. And so the only case that we have um, in public health, you know, who push this, push this, push this. Um, is if families know that they're getting somebody tested, that they do not send anyone to school. That they remain at home um, while they are pending the test results. Because we've kind of got caught in that situation and all of the situation, and all of these instances that happen in the district and that there's somebody pending a test. And then that test comes back as positive. And then our student cases are, have all been the only transmitted. So, stay home if you don't feel well and don't go anywhere if someone in your household is suspected of having COVID until we know for sure.
But I just want, exactly what she said was what I was trying to say before, when we're talking about staying open in orange, we're trying to reassure the teachers association. Is that what we're doing is working well and if it does go through the community, it shouldn't affect our schools. And if it does, then we have to change the conversation. But right now. I think we need to go ahead with the fact that having kids in school is what is best for kids and um. And hopefully, we're taking extraordinary measures in the schools to keep this, so we try to do the most we can to keep the kids happy.
Melissa, we'll continue with you. Can you give us a fifth day activity update?
Yeah, uh, so fifth day is going on actually pretty well. Um, the task force has reduced the number of times the meeting. So we will not meet again as now until October 22nd. The main concerns with the task force right now would be a surge in cases and what that could mean for their programs. We did have after-school. We did have after-school start, it starts powers last week in all of one of our elementary and middle schools, and so far we've been without incident. The kids are having a great time, you know, it provides a little bit of relief for the parents. And then the fifth-day programs have been continuing with about those same numbers. We have seen an increase in the numbers in some of the accesses to virtual programs that some of our organizations are providing. And that's pretty much it. So we are, oh, sorry, there was one thing that came up with the ECEA survey. So Mr. Coleman, we have us looking into the number of staff children that may not have care on the fifth day right now, predominantly from the school and high school teachers. And so what we will be doing is opening those elementary programs where we offer that free childcare for staff. The kids would go to their own school where they normally go during the week. So if my child lives at Brush Creek, then that's where I would have my child or my high school teacher attend during the fifth day.
Excellent, thank you. Adele, you've given us already the perm sub update. The other category of employees that we were seeking were bus drivers. Can you give us an update on bus drivers?
Well, we have some good news there as well. We have received four applicants, and I have made two offers, and we are working on one of them has to come in for an interview, and the other one we're working on some references and background checks. Tim did say that he could really use one to two would be great to have another one or two drivers, two would be definitely ideal, so.
Still in the market.
We're still in the market for some bus drivers. The incentives that we had in the, had out there to the community, I think, just hopefully helped with that, and the ability to actually get them in to get the driver's license, that has improved it, so.
Very good. All right, lastly, Dr. Jarno, you want to tell us about new technology that has been made available to teachers and elementary-level one-to-one device efforts?
Yes, indeed. So we had ordered 500 cameras with multi-directional microphones and waited for a long, long, long time for those to show up, but they did arrive in the last week, and I want to commend the tech staff, everybody pitched in, and got them out to schools as quickly as possible. So the teachers should have cameras for their rooms that have multi-directional microphones to make teaching in-person and online simultaneously much easier. The other pieces that we have ordered, using some CARES money, 590 new touchscreen Chrome devices for our elementary schools, which is a wonderful thing, so that should we get into that red area and have to go remote, each child will have, will be now K through 12 on a one-to-one program, which is wonderful, except that that also brings with it some financial challenges. So the money to actually purchase those devices came from the CARES Act. However, we have then going to have to support those devices going forward. We were also able to use some CARES Act money to hire an additional support specialist to help us take care of those devices. We've added about 1,200 new devices in the past three years, and we have not increased our support staff at all. So we're trying to take a look at how to be more efficient, what we can do to do more things remotely, and then we have that additional support specialist, which is amazing. However, that came out of CARES money, so we are going to have to figure out how to fund that moving forward. And then we'll also need to figure out how to put the new 590 devices into a rotation moving forward. So we're gonna have to plan out our budget for, you know, the next five or six years to come, where we're gonna replace old devices as they age out and get new devices. So that is going to be another budgetary challenge moving forward. And then finally, what we've discovered is that the repair budget for the technology department was woefully underfunded. We didn't really, we didn't know that we were going to be remote and have K-12 one-to-one devices, and so we need to up that as well. We didn't know that the high schools would be hybrid, and that those computers would probably be getting a little bit more use than we anticipated. So we do need to adjust our budget, and Sandy and Chelsea Business Services and I have been working together to make that happen for the rest of this year, and then also for moving into the year to come.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions on any of those elements of the COVID update?
There's a question about, excuse me, the technology. Are we first coming to do driver technology, or is that on hold, or where are we?
We're on hold with that right now. Dr. Jarno has took over, taken over interim responsibilities for that department, and is doing a great job at this point. So I think we're directing resources to other places for this year, but I think in the spring, Katie, in the spring, we'll look at reposting.
I am breaking up with technology at the end of this year. I love it, I love this department, I love what we're doing, but we just have one job.
All right, that's all, thank you.
All right. So we now have some celebrations for the, oh, and I think these guys are on here, the media, right? This is a resolution in support of National School Bus Safety Week and National School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day, and two of the halls today is gonna take a leak. You see his face?
Excellent, can everybody hear? Stevie?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'll be presenting to you our National School Bus Safety Week resolution and School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day for school year 2021. School bus drivers and all transportation staff make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens. Excellence in education is dependent on, dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful routes to school and school settings, and the safety and well-being of many students relies on school bus drivers and the school transportation to get them to and from school and other events in a safe and professional manner. School bus drivers and all of the transportation staff, including the office staff, trainers, mechanics, and dispatchers, are all an invaluable component of the educational system and have formed an outstanding job transporting our most precious resources, our young students. October 19th through 23rd, 2020, will be designated as National School Bus Safety Week, and that week will be designated as the National School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. We promote efforts to provide all of our nation's schools with positive and safe learning climates. The theme for the 2020 School Bus Safety Week is Red Lights Mean Stop. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Is there any, something I've always valued was the relationship the kids form with their school bus driver, we have a kid riding the buses, really precious, and I know we've had some excellent drivers here, I think, over the years, a lot of longevity, and that's just a bonus for our kids to know they're bus drivers, and more relationships at every level throughout the day. We appreciate all the work of you and your team, Katie.
Thank you.
I'll just say that for some of our children, our bus drivers might be the first friendly face they see in the morning, and so providing a sense of safety and security for them to be able to start their day is just huge. And also really appreciate Tim and your whole department. I noticed you left out the director in your population office ago, but appreciate you and your whole team working extra hard this year with some of the additional regulations we had to be able to comply with health concerns and restrictions, and that's a, that's a whole lot to deal with when folks are learning new routes and figuring out new tools and whatnot. So thank you so much for the work of that, you and your department too.
Thank you. It's mostly them, it's, it's a lot less me than it is them, so they're great.
Tim, we do need to recognize that you, you got thrown into the, deep into the pool this year. You're just staff, but you've done a great job adapting. We're getting you some more help coming in soon, so thank you, and to all your drivers, the couple of them that got to ride with this year, and you've done a good job, so appreciate you, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, to approve Resolution Number 202021-8 in support of National School Bus Safety Week and National School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day.
Awesome. Any further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero, thank you.
All right, some more celebrations, only have a resolution in support of National School Lunch Week and National School Kitchen Staff Appreciation Day, and I see Crystal Sordo on the screen. Over to you, sir.
So thank you so much. Hello, my name is Crystal Sordo, Director of Nutrition. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to have this time this evening. I'd like to ask the board to adopt the Resolution of 2021, supporting the National School Lunch Week and National School Kitchen Staff Appreciation Day. Due to the, we want to recognize all the hard work my staff puts in every day to ensure all our students of Eagle County schools are fed a healthy meal daily, especially in these tough times that we're dealing with right now. Lunch Week is celebrated nationally across the country. This year, actually, again this year, it's being celebrated during a week that we're off. But I still want to recognize, it still is Lunch Week, even though we're not in school. But we will celebrate our staff the following week, on Thursday, the 22nd, thanking them for all their great work and feeding our students and staff, and we're gonna present them with a gift, each staff member with a gift of appreciation from our department. And that's it.
I know we especially appreciate your work over spring and summer, it just keeps going on and on, and I, I don't know of a family that didn't, who needed a lunch, who didn't come and get it. My wife and I know Shelly on the board as well, were at several spots handing out lunches, and it's, it's a great, it's a great relief to, when you hear of families who need, who need, who need food, to just say, no, if you went to the high school between these hours, you could get as many meals as you wanted to, you know, one were serving those during the day. So you're, you're a lifeline to a lot of people, and I want to let you know, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Chris, I'd like to extend that and just acknowledge how creative the department has been in making sure that even when kids are in remote learning, that we have an opportunity for them to come and get food. That's unprecedented in the lunches that we've done in my previous years in this job, so I really appreciate you guys' willingness to go out of your way and develop new systems to make sure that kids have access to food even when they're not able to come to school this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for everything you guys did while we were remote learning, and I just want to say that I sure do miss being at a lunch, lunches at school, just saying hi to all the ladies, they're always so nice, and this is something we talk in my household every morning, that my kids are, okay, what's for lunch today? And they always got like, oh, that's my favorite, that's my second one, and thank you for doing breakfast for lunch last week, because they sure did miss that. And yeah, thank you, you guys do a great job, and the kids love every single one, and I don't think there's one that they've ever said, no, I can't eat that, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I approve Resolution 202021-9 in support of National School Lunch Week and National School Kitchen Staff Appreciation Day.
Awesome. Is there any further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Missy. So last but certainly not least is the Resolution. Thank you, thank you. We're not trying to rush anything. Thank you, Mr. Sordo. So last but not least is the Resolution in support of National Principals Month. And Superintendent Coleman, you're gonna take the lead on this.
You've been happy to address this one. Yeah, this year, we have to acknowledge the work that the principals have been tasked with. We talk a lot about how creative teachers have gotten and all the hard work that they're doing. We can't forget that the principals have been put in a tough spot this year. There's no guidebook to walk us through what this year looks like. As you saw demonstrated tonight, the experts give us three different versions of this recommendation, and we're left to sort it out. But the real work of sorting it out is happening at the building level. Principals have worked with their teachers to create customized schedules. They've worked with their teachers and their parents to be flexible, to create opportunities for learning unlike anything we've ever done before. They are literally reinventing the plane as it is flying. So I can't commend them enough for what they do. And I would say to the principals in our district specifically, that I have a lot of respect for them for pushing me, and for pushing our team, and for pushing our board, their strong will, their creative thinkers, and their fearless advocates for their students and for their staff. And they say the things that are uncomfortable and difficult to say because they know it's the right thing, and they push me, and they push us to think outside of the box, and to change our minds, and to be responsive, to make sure that their kids are well taken care of, and that their students are, that your staff members are well taken care of. And we can't forget that the other constituent that they, group that they manage constantly are parents, and we have had parents at all extremes in this situation, and they have done a masterful job of explaining our logic. They are the person that's on speed dial for parents, not me, well, save a few. Primarily, it's the parents that are getting those phone calls and those emails, and my hat's off to them for managing this situation with such professionalism, with such grace and commitment. So we couldn't get through this without their leadership, so my gratitude to them and all that they do to make our organization as fine as it is. So I would ask you to join me in praising them and passing this resolution, and ask for any other comments of support that you might have for our principals.
Well, I guess I would just say, and I'll keep it short, because there's been a lot, but I'm, yeah, I've had the opportunity to visit some schools and talk with principals and help with power pool, and it is, it's really amazing to see how much thought and effort goes into every little detail this year, from when kids enter schools to the spacing, you know, repurposing every room, and I just, I don't envy the position that they've been putting this year, and I've been really impressed, and obviously what they're doing has been very successful, we still have kids in school. So yeah, I would like to, Charlie, Superintendent Coleman, and saying thank you, what you do is, I can't even imagine, and I would be, I appreciate it, I'm very grateful.
I would say principals around the county, thank you very much for putting up with this, and with that, I would say I would approve the Resolution Number 202021-10 in support of National Free School Month.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much for being here. Welcome, I've been seeing you for quite a while.
I am going to just jump down to the last slide of the presentation, because that's actually your first attempt, I am. But the, um, the action item is, every year we have to approve the Head Start Policy Council. Am I on? Is that better? So, every year we have to approve the Policy Council members and also the Colorado Preschool Program members, and I do want to make one correction. Kendra Knowles is K-E-A-L, Powell's, not Knowles, so there was, that was a misspelling for me, so I want that to be corrected. But I want to go ahead and do the whole Head Start slide, and also let you know that this is a review here, and they are actually going to do a review. It's going to be a virtual review, which will be new to all of us. We are not going to get that protocol of what that looks like until December, and they're going to start those reviews in January. So, normally I do my Head Start Policy or Board of Ed training in January, and I'm thinking about trying to move it to December, so if they do come in January, that we can talk through that protocol. So, I just wanted to let you know about it. They're going to be asking us to send them documents, it's going to be all virtual, and they'll do interviews with this board, just as they have done in the past, with teachers, with parents, with Policy Council members, so it would be a virtual meeting, and that they will come in and ask. We were actually scheduled last year, but of course, they were, like, all of us trying to figure out how to do things in this new reality, or new situation, so we will have one, it would be after January. We used to be pretty safe to say, well, it's going to be in April and May, because no one wanted to come here through the winter and the travel, but now I don't know that to be true, so it could be really anytime after January. So, as soon as those protocols are updated, I'll let you know, but many of the things that are part of the annual training is the same thing that's going to be part of the review. So, I just wanted to let you know about those Head Start related pieces, and again, I attached the official statement about that review on there. Again, nothing in there, but you need to be really pointed out, other than the timeline, and it was good to ask how involved in decision-making, and that I do come do these presentations, and you are given the information, that hopefully you will have everything you need to be part of that process successfully, so. Any questions on kind of the Head Start portion of this update? Okay, this one is the action item.
I feel our question is more of, am I allowed to vote, Susan, on the, I am?
I'll move to approve the Head Start Policy Council members and the Colorado Preschool Advisory members as presented.
Awesome.
Are there any comments or questions on that? We're going to get into the deep report after we do this bit of talking. No? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And I'm going back to the information portion of the meeting, and I just wanted to let everybody know, the construction for the Edwards Early Learning Center is on track. We're going to be doing the walkthrough punch tomorrow. There is a little nervousness around some sneaks, but there's supposed to be here on Monday and ready to go, so next week, we have staff that have been willing to come in during the break, so we can open and be ready on the 19th. So, we were able to have all programs represented, even though we were unable to open all the rooms, so we have two classrooms for the previously Edwards community, two classrooms for the previous Avon community, and then two classrooms for the June Creek, so we were happy to do that. It was really mainly the infant programs that we had to replay displaced and try to find alternative care, and Melissa was a big help on that, and we do have one classroom that we're currently housing in the Family Learning Center, to make sure that those toddlers did have a place to go during the time that we didn't have those classrooms open due to the construction delay. So, I think, considering all the factors that went involved, and again, a lot of the delay was because of, what's it called, materials not being accessible, which a lot of people are finding, I think overall, it went pretty well, when all considered, and so, we're excited, I kind of joke that tomorrow's my birthday, so I guess having it be done on that day is kind of appropriate, so I'll have a big photo or something, I'm not sure. The delivery for all materials, Monday we'll set up, and licensing as well, we've actually already done all the file reviews, so we should be opening up on the 19th, once we get back to school fully operational, and it's going pretty smooth, I don't think we have to add, we're crossing a lot of fingers, but I think we're going to be good. How many total rooms, will there be? So, there are ten, there are a total of ten preschool rooms, and four of the public, so fourteen. And all of them are opening, we do have staff and students, not all opening full, but we're actually pretty excited about that, with many people had to plan alternative care. We weren't fully open, but I, we're going to be getting pretty close, I'm super excited about that. Well, jumping to enrollment, so all the Head Start slots are fully allocated, and we have all of those, everyone, so we have had a couple people move out, so we are now currently at sixty-five, we've got four more to fill, but we have thirty days after, so we are doing good on our Head Start obligation. We're going to use the November count as an alternative count, a couple reasons, one, we weren't available to families during much of the summer and the spring, so reaching those most adverse families, the number of applications we had were down, and with the delay of this program, we would have been able to count them, all the people that will be starting on the 19th. So, preschool does get that November first delayed campaign, so we will be using that. So, we talked about those two. Currently, where we're sowing a little bit behind is, we actually have eleven lower for special education, which Amy's like, yay! So, that's good. And the other area is tuition is a little bit lower than last year, those are the two areas, and we do feel that we will be above prior year, even with the delayed start of the classrooms not having them all open. Our goal is to fully use all of our CBP slots, it's going to be kind of an aggressive goal. We've been, since the last three weeks, doing ten children on average a week, new enrollments, and that would have to continue for us to fully utilize all the CBP slots. So, we're on target, as long as that trend stays, so, I know for sure by November first. Does the tuition eight lower than last year? Because we're using more for Head Start. No, we have space, a lot of it is less people choosing to go. Well, again, we don't know when they're not putting as much with Head Start CBP, we can know if they don't get approved, or those type, if they just don't come to, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming when we call away, that some people did choose just to wait.
And did you give the option to the people that are on the way, is that rush break and people running?
Yes, yes, and we're doing, we're also giving the option for remote, it was because they felt uncomfortable. We do have eleven students across all of the program that have opted for it, because either they or a family member has a health-related issue. Most of those are children receiving special education that are CPD. And that has gone well, again, we all think it's a little better when they come and get that chance to socialize with those, but it's a health risk, and it's gone well.
I'm sort of surprised and impressed that you can deliver virtual programming at this age group, but that makes me think, if you know of one family receiving special educational services, and hearing that, once they realize that all of the therapies would be delivered virtually, why didn't it make sense for them to come in person? I'm wondering if you or Amy could speak to that a little bit? Like, why therapies would be delivered virtually versus in person at this age group?
We really encourage to come, because the model for preschool is really, they're receiving services throughout the day, it's embedded in all the things. The direct services is just a piece, but then, the, they, the service providers teach all our staff to work on those skills throughout the day as they're socializing with children, so to get that support isolation, I don't know translates as well into the classroom when they move to the next grade. So, we would really encourage whenever possible, again, if you have a health, safety risk, then obviously that's a cost that you've got to keep your child safe first, but they truly benefit by practicing those skills over and over and over again in a classroom, versus working for a limited amount of time with an adult. So, I strongly encourage that, really, if they can come, they're getting a lot more exposure to learning those strategies than if it's just that way.
Well, I guess I'm asking more about why therapies would be delivered virtually? If they're in person at the school's aside, so that they can serve more children, or to minimize the risk of being in so many different facilities in different contexts?
Yes, can. So, for our service providers, some of them share multiple buildings, and so we do not have staff going between buildings at this time, so therefore, it's remote in one building and in person in another building. We're, with the communities spread being lower, we're loosening up many of those restrictions, but we didn't want a service provider like a school psychologist or speech therapist to go between multiple sites and potentially themselves get sick, or if they were the sick ones, sharing that with multiple school sites. So, as the spread has maintained kind of at a lower level risk, the increase of in-person services is occurring, if that makes sense. And I do want to share what it looks like. It would be, the special education teacher there in person comes out of the classroom with those three or four children that are working with that therapist, and she really facilitates it, so it is not that separate, and even in a couple classrooms, I'm super excited, they've actually been pushing that into the classroom, so they've been doing that instruction in the classroom like normally would, but instead of the teacher being there in front of them, they may watch the lesson, and then the early childhood team supports it.
Thank you. And I just have one last question on the class of the key, so since we have to separate them in these ways for your tracking purposes, what happens if the family is receiving special ed services and also eligible for Head Start or CBP? Do you have situations like that where they could fall into multiple?
They are, most, every single, we have sixty-nine Head Start children, of them, sixty-five of them are Head Start CBP. And so, we really try to include here children, not slots, so we really say if they're CBP only, or if they're Head Start, we try to keep those two chunks separate. So, these are not slots, these are students, but then, every once in a while, when you do the math, you're like, huh, you're a little bit over, but that's why. We actually have some that would be all three, they would be IMP, CBP, Head Starts, which is interesting. So, that's why all those numbers are kind of quick.
And just clarification, that's so that they can go full day?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so you combine the Head Start slot with the CBP, or the special education services with Head Start or CBP, so that they can go full day?
And most of our children are full. And that's in my report, other than, this is what it looks like now, again, keep them separate. We do not wear masks in preschool, just because they end up touching it, and actually, the Call Department of, not Color Department, but the Office of Head Start actually said it's more cumbersome because they're touching it, but we did do lots of other types of mitigation, like removing water bottles, unfortunately, because they pick up other friends' water bottles, and we can't have them, so we do have cups that they're using, and have water available, and we do have them set at different tables at lunch, but we haven't, even with preschool plus, haven't had child-to-child or child-to-teacher exposure, even though the children in the programs are wearing masks, because the teachers aren't, and they wash and wash and wash them. How did they clear masks? They're really good, so the teachers usually primarily do the key instruction classes, because they are more friendly, but they really like them, and if I walk in, because whenever I go do an observation, I wear them, I want the children to have that, and there are differences, they even said, I like your mask, those days got to that, so the children act different when they can see our face, and definitely, the teachers have gotten used to wearing them, like when they're outside, we're not going to wear them, but when they're doing those key instructional times, especially if they need to do around language or socio-emotional, they're using them, again, it is not, the teachers have sacrificed, they have kind of, sometimes their skin, and sometimes pressure there, but it's been really easy to see. Any other questions? Well, once we're fully up and running, we'll definitely have an invite to come see the new facility, and many people here are seeing first question development. Anything else, will you?
Any other questions, Shelly, once again? Well done. Good work, excited to get that building up and running, and...
And things.
And the review here is nothing to be worried about, and we get plenty of training, and we'll review all the answers to the questions, but...
We'll give you the questions, or the...
We can study them, and they probably will do it sooner than later, if they don't have to come here.
Yeah.
It's always been the spring, because they're traveling from somewhere, and it's always you coming to the mall, which is, that's the case. Alright, so, that brings us to the Committee Membership for 3A Approval. Andy Muschler presenting.
Good afternoon, everyone. Here tonight to seek board approval for newer continuing 3A committee members. The committee was established back in 2016 with the 3A voter-approved mill levy, and part of the language of the 3A was that they would have a committee to monitor the revenues from those dollars that were generated. And so, since we started this, we've put out requests for committee members, and it's been based on their political affiliation, as well as the area that they're representing. But we've put out a couple solicitations for members that are interested in serving on the committee, and we continue to work off of the last solicitation for interested parties, and finding those that serve in the area and have a good political affiliation. So, based on that, we are requesting the board to approve the new continuing members. They're listed on the right side, which we only have two, three continuing numbers, and so the rest will be new ones, and that is since last year in office. The 3A committee has been, they meet quarterly, and have, in the past, came to the board and requested that the board approve the independent auditor, review the expenditures, ensure that we're spending appropriately, so the board has since approved that, so that not only do we have the monitoring committee, but we also have the independent audit report to confirm that the expenditures are being spent appropriately. So, we would like to ask tonight, upon reviewing of those members, if the board would consider those for a move.
Well, first off, thank you, it looks like we had forty-three requests for an appointment to the committee, and I'm so grateful that there are so many people in our community that want to get involved. And I just have a question, would this committee, while their key responsibility, it looks like, to support and advise and have some accountability around the current funding stream, should, well, with 5B being on the ballot, would they, or could they be involved with advocating for that?
So, with the way that 5B is written, they definitely can advocate on behalf of the initial committee, but 5B is written in a way that the oversight monitoring committee would no longer be necessary, because we would have the independent auditor with the skills and expertise to definitely drill down pretty deep in that, to ensure that the expenditures are done appropriately. So, we'll always have a separate agreed-upon procedures done, that's in addition to our regular audit, just for 5B. And the reason for that is, it's just been very difficult to continue, even though there's an interest that over time, they may or may not make it to the first meeting, and we have a continued just circulation of people's hurry, so it just makes it a lot smoother, and the ability to have that independent auditor do it gives us the confirmation that we're spending appropriately.
I'll move to approve the 3A committee membership effective October 7th, 2020.
Awesome.
Further comments or questions from the board? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Well, seeing as it's effective now, welcome and thank you all for your service.
Yes, we do appreciate this work of the community and the work that goes on from the finance team. This brings us to the employee housing update. Danny, it's you again.
Yeah, so just to follow up on the last meeting and giving you a status update of where we're at. The first item that we wanted to talk about was the housing committee. And if you remember right, when we first started going through the whole housing information with Mulloy Park, we put out a request for anybody that completed the housing survey, if they were interested, to let us know. And we would keep them informed and involved in the meetings. So we've reached out to everybody that filled that out and actually getting a pretty high response of yes, I'm still interested, which is actually really good. So that definitely shows that there's still a need out there for it. So as we're working through this, we're identifying what the purpose of that committee really would be and how that would work as we move forward on the two preferred sites for sort of the chief development, which is in Edwards and Eagle. And from that, we would combine that committee that would include Superintendent Fulman, myself, Adele, and Tom Ron. And then we have a principal, Wade Hill, that has volunteered to be on that. We also have members from the land resource committee that are showing an interest to kind of venture from the land resource committee to the employee housing. And so we're not going to have any problem indicating people's participation in that, especially as we get closer and closer to the actual development of the property. So we'll be defining that purpose, getting feedback from them and what they see, how they can support the movement forward also. So we'll be bringing forward a committee, including the purpose of that and goals of it. On the employee survey part, we've been reaching out to Willa Willford, who helped finalize the development of the employee housing master plan, did the initial survey work in rolling that out and the final recommendations. And taking this to the next step, really the response we've gotten back is that we don't need to do another survey, that they actually have enough data and can cross-tap related even deeper than what they did for the actual employee housing master plan. And from that data, they'll be able to help really drill down on the difference between for sale or rent products, the unit size, the pricing, and how many we need in each area. So based on that information, we'll be reaching out to other, the committee as well to confirm that, but also working with the contractor, the architect to figure out what kind of pricing that we can begin to drill down and get even deeper on. And so once we get that information, we'll be able to identify a lot more on what that is. So we will be recommending working with Willa and contracting with her with the scope of services to do that type of work and get that off the ground. And so that will really be the driver for our next step. As well as doing a RFP for a owner's rep or project manager for that. And we're about 80% of the way through that. We just need to kind of finalize and really define what that would work. And we really need that person that has that level of expertise that is dealt with employee housing. Because it's, even though we've done a lot of contracts and construction with building schools, I don't have the expertise and neither does Erin, anything that we currently have employed in those positions to be able to really drill down in the level of affordable housing. So it would be similar to what RLH did, but on a much reduced level of scope because we won't have such significant projects. And that'll help us with the RFPs for a contractor and a architect, whether we do a design build or a CMTC model, and help us really define what that is and then give us that oversight. Probably, I think the term's almost with that parental guidance over what we're doing to make sure that we don't let anything slip through the cracks. So those will all be coming out soon and you'll see communications going out about that. So we just wanted to make sure that you kind of knew where we were and where that was coming from. At the last meeting also, we talked a little bit about Habitat and what kind of role they could play in these homes. And they actually have done some work with other agencies that involve townhomes or apartments. And they do a little different, but there's still that volunteer portion in the donations and resources from local vendors like contractors and stuff that can do the work, electricians and stuff like that. But that's something that we can continue to look at and see if we want to do. And so the big question of the difference between do we want to do for rent or sale product? And getting that additional data will help drive that and help us get to that answer. One of the other things we talked about doing with them is seeing if they could adjust their level of AMI to where the homes that they're building in other areas like Stratton Flats and IP Bar, if we could do that in a way that would allow for more of our certified staff to also qualify. Because right now, they just kind of go right over the top of that if it's a two-income household and they don't have any children yet. So we need to be able to find a way to work with them on that area too. So we're not giving up on that option, but and keeping the lines of communication open and hopefully we'll be able to do something along the lines with them also. And it seems like we haven't really moved that far, but actually we've got a lot done since the last update. But I wanted to let you guys know that the RFP would be going out and work in line with it and why you might be hearing people talking about housing committees in service. But is there any questions you guys have regarding that?
I just had a question about Mulloy. Can you remind us where we're at with timeline and with the current residents there?
Right, so the current residents, the notification for the requirement to vacate the property has been removed until further notice. And so legally, we still only need to give them a six-month notice. But our intention, based on the survey, was to do these other smaller projects first and get some housing provided in those really hot spot areas and then follow up with Mulloy Park. So I actually have a meeting coming up with Melissa Schirn and she was, I can't remember the name of her firm now. That's one that we are contacting with. I'm so sorry, Melissa. But we're connecting with them again just to go through that and see, because they came back and said that they found some other ways to help get them affordable. And so we're just, we're keeping in contact with them and seeing where we're at, what will be available. And then as these properties are developed, I think it will probably generate a higher level of interest in Mulloy also, once they see what can be done. And then looking more at the opportunity for the stable family home style versus the townhome condo apartment type style.
Thank you. So just making sure I understand, the current residents in Mulloy, there's not a current deadline in place for them to have to vacate?
Correct.
If and when we wanted, when we wanted to move in that direction, we just need to give six months of that?
Yes. And the intent would be to give them way more notice than that, as we did before. And unfortunately, the residents in Mulloy Park have been quite the rollercoaster ride since they've lived there because there really is this drive to get some development going on there. Attaining the level of a foreign building is difficult. And so we kind of make progress, a lot of progress forward and then take a process back. But it is still on the radar, but they are all there and able to stay there until further
Excellent. Thank you for that update. Any other questions for the housing part? Appreciate all that work, but hopefully we'll be able to really provide excellent opportunities for our staff in the future when we want to have people pouring in to go come to work too. Right? Thank you. All right, that brings us to these items that are on consent. And I just wanted to ask a question about the student attendance monitoring, because I probably don't remember this correctly, but didn't we approve some special emergency attendance policies that should have been attached here or how do we do that?
Can you jump in here if you're aware of it? But the previous attendance policies were more about how we defined our educational program.
So we had to pass a resolution earlier this year before we started school to include the remote learning options into our attendance policy. What this tonight is just a monitoring report on our regular attendance policy. So there's no actual change to our regular attendance policy. We simply passed a resolution to add to it for just this year.
Okay, right, that's what I remember. And I was just wondering why they weren't on here, but it's because it was just the one-year resolution and this is our monitoring of the policy on a regular basis.
And this is the regular time during the year when we do the monitoring report on that policy. We did the resolution earlier because we had to do that before school started in order to add the remote learning option.
Right, which, okay, that makes perfect sense to me now. And that explains why it wasn't included here.
And we did want to actually change the attendance policy. It was just a resolution for only the 2021 group.
And we're still trying to figure out what we were going to do about truancy this year. We're making actions to engage our disengaged students is our primary piece. But the court system, because of COVID, is very backed up and we cannot get very many slots to even take families to work at this point. We only have three students that we can bring in the month of October, based on the dockets. So that's not giving us very much emphasis in that way. And so what we're doing at the building levels is really looking at those truancy prevention plans at the building level and then working with the families. We've actually outreach to multiple organizations to help us engage our disengaged students. And so we have Ego Value, Bigger Health, we have Our Future Pathways, a bunch of people that are very engaged with youth in the community to go volunteering, to go after them outdoors, to grow out with our students that are disengaged at this point, what we can do for them back. So we're kind of taking a different approach this year. We've also looked at changing the thresholds a little bit in our truancy system. It's automatically generated, but because of the different schedules things this year, we're still playing with what it brings number of alerts in our system per student based on hundred model and based on, you know, the new schedule at HPS. So we're kind of working with the faculty of each of the buildings to kind of more customize plan for them, based on what their new schedules are this year and based on what they're seeing as far as trends with their students. So I don't think it would be a policy change. It would just be a practices change and give probably like a temporary resolution once we figure out where that, what kind of sweet spot is between what we, our thresholds, I would say, of what we need to preach school.
Right, great. Thank you for that clarification. So I think this means that we actually have to vote on this separately then hold it. So I'll move to approve the monitoring report for governance policy, DL 18, student attendance as presented.
One second.
Anybody else with clarification needs? Thank you for your patience. Missy?
Thank you. Mr. Armandza?
Aye.
Mrs. Altar?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Barcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
All right, great. Did I forget anything this evening? Oh, Shelly, I'm so sorry. There was. Thank you. There we go. The legislative representative is going to talk us through the CASB proposed resolutions.
Well, I don't know, I asked Missy about this and I don't know that we want to go through them individually. I guess I wanted to just talk about a couple of them that kind of seem more relevant to our situation. One is to pause the testing and teacher accountability for this year, which came up earlier this afternoon. And seems like something that probably makes sense given the current COVID situation. Another talks about student count, which has been an issue for everyone given COVID and the changes in student populations and what that can do to funding. Those are kind of the ones that I think probably have the most impactful for us. I mean, all of these things are important in terms, including a proposal to not let public school money be diverted to private schools and so on and so forth. But I think in terms of what we will feel the most, it's sort of those two. And if you want, I can go through them one by one, but I think you've all read them and I would just like input on if people have comments or thoughts or disagree with some of the things that are being proposed. And I can take those to the CASB meeting, which is a week after next.
Shelly, just for clarification, are we supposed to, as a board, come together with our sort of one proposal? No, so, because I read something about.
So these have already been proposed. If we had wanted to propose more.
And maybe your president's support or his shoes, like our time now, okay, so.
And we will ultimately vote on, I will ultimately vote on each of these. So if there is something that you think we should discuss and that you would want me to vote against or, you know, have concerns about or questions that I should ask before I vote for it, that's what I would need to know prior to the meeting.
Okay. I have some concerns. I have others that are all supposed to be in the board on something.
I have a question about the, is our participation in CMAS and the teacher ratings that's mandated by the state?
It was last year, they, they stopped it for the year, you know, said it wasn't required last year due to COVID. And so basically, they're just asking for another year of grace period essentially, but it would return in theory. I mean, this isn't a rebuttal saying that we never have it again. It's just that through COVID.
For the next academic year.
Really because it's not a typical situation in terms of learning for kids or instruction for teachers.
Right. Okay. I understand that. I didn't know what our, if it, generally speaking, we would be mandated to do those things, but we're just asking for a reprieve due to kind of a health emergency type of
I have one question about the, I can't even say the word, but can I have been away with oils? We had that situation here with the boy that took it to the legislature. Does that still exist here? Are we doing that or are we, yes?
Yes, and we have an additional local policy, right, that allows the family to designate a caregiver, caregiver who is a volunteer at the school, which isn't, which is one step above and beyond.
So this would allow like a school nurse versus where we had to do the.
I think it can't include a school nurse because their federal license prevents them from participating in that piece. So it cannot be a nurse or a health assistant because they under that under the license of the registered nurses, but it can be other providers, volunteers that.
So it would be more like what we're doing currently here.
I would support all of the ones that have the red title reported with favorable recommendation by the legislative resolution committee. There was only two or three that didn't actually get the red stamp from the legislative.
I feel the same way.
Committee. And one of them seemed like there was a, almost two were the same, but the one that they approved was more specific and better than that. So I think that was one set up.
And there's some of them that I don't know the legal implications, like the bus video, using bus video to let people rest in here. So I think there's probably reasons that they will go over during the meeting as to why they did not give it their stamp of approval. But I agree that we should probably, I mean, my intention is probably to vote for the ones that were recommended, were recommended by the group that vetted each of these. If somebody thinks that's not what we should do, then we should talk about that. I had a little question too about the Claire Davis. I remember when that passed and there was concern about that we didn't have the funding to do any of it. Did that drive a lot of the changes we made to these school buildings? I mean, my understanding at the time was that it was more about the liability of the district if something did go wrong. But did our liability in those situations make us make? But did our liability in those situations make us make the decisions we made when we adjusted buildings?
What Claire Davis requires us to do is to be best practice, but best practice is not defined anywhere. So we have to look around at what the rest of the state is doing, work with experts in what are considered passive security measures or facility-based security measures, and then make sure that our buildings adhere to those. So in the design changes that we made in our facilities by having the secure vestibules, the additional cameras, that moved Eagle County schools ahead of the curve on what is best practice. So in terms of liability or infrastructure, we're well positioned.
But I would assume you would still support this, given that it removes even more liability in the event that something were to happen? Was that your feeling on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that that law lacked clarity.
Yes.
And lacked guidance, but significantly increased liability for districts. So anything that we could do to better define that or run of that liability or make it appropriate?
How about the internet access one? Does anyone have, did, does anyone think that we would have students that would log into, I mean, my understanding was that we did have kids going to parking lots and trying to log into school internet from outside the building, which is really what this is getting at. I mean, don't we have kids that, not necessarily now because of the hotspots, but we initially have kids that would go sit outside a school building. And so they're asking Comcast and Century Tel to make sure their service is accessible in that way. Does that make sense to us? Something we would want or we don't care because we found better ways to work around?
I think that's always something that we would want. I think having direct internet access in a home is better than what we provide.
Like in the parking lot?
Right. And that is true even in the olden days before COVID. I would frequently have kids, high school kids who lived in the blocks hanging out around Eagle Valley Middle School. They're happy, they're not happy, but utilizing our wireless. You know, we've done a really great job with the hotspots, but they're not as good as access to the home. So I think that anything that we can do to provide better access to their homes is something to put the direction a little ahead.
My only question. Ultimately, the things that are passed are then taken to the legislature, but they are just, this is CASB's position on each of these. So then the legislature has to, you know, maybe look one and say, you know, no way, that's not something we're interested in. But it's CASB speaking as one voice and has decided that these are the things that we are going to put forward to the legislature as things that we support. That's what we're, that's what this is about. But I guess, but our voting on it doesn't make it true. It doesn't make the change until it goes to legislation.
You feel like you've got enough guidance from us, they.
Did anybody read any and think this is weird? It's comfortable.
And where some years, you want to give the feedback to the committee that this is much improved. It's actually treated well. It's presented in a way that we could understand it. They were able to digest it in maybe half an hour, forty-five minutes of reading and not days and days. It was clear, a lot of the ones before, there'd be ones that were really like, no, that is weird. And it seems like they weeded those out and really did a lot of the mining upfront. So I appreciate that as a, as a board member. Because it was really bad. There was just newcomers on there and there was no way to really wrap their heads around it.
Too hard to figure out what they were trying to get at.
Yeah, closer to, this was thirty-five pages instead of closer to a hundred and you're just, yeah, it was impossible. So this is good. They're targeting it and pinpointing more, because you go to the legislature, there's too much stuff and they're going to say we don't want to talk about it either. So thank them for the work of the improvement. And the work that CASB does is, you know, should be benefit for districts all around the state. And sometimes up at the federal levels, they team up with other state school board associations. So we appreciate you, Shelley, for the work and the test as your, as your, her shadow on the legislative. We appreciate that. And sorry, I almost jumped over that.
That's okay.
Now, I forgot anything else. That was just information and discussion. If anybody has any last minute things, it's got to be just only before, what'd you say, next week?
Yeah.
I think everybody's good up there, in their direction. What else did I forget? So governance policies, we did some monitoring reports. I appreciate that. I really like how it's in the school improvement plans with their policy implications and the state, the principals working to look at the policy aspect of what we could do to help them by changing policies. Advancing the goals and mission of the district, learning, teaching kids and keeping them in school. So that's what we're really trying to do. And then impacting student learning. I think the information we give to principals is just invaluable and the work that they do and the whole team to give kids learning as best we can in these times. Any other comments or feedback on these evaluation questions for the meeting? Anybody ready to go home?
I think one more comment before closing on Friday afternoon at five thirty. Julie Cavalo from Edwards Elementary will receive her Teacher of the Year award. So if you want to watch that, it'll be live streamed on Facebook, on the Colorado Association of High Level Educators. So you can Google that up and tune into their page at five thirty and you can watch her receive her award live. Congratulations to you.
Excellent, yes, congratulations. So round of applause. And I feel like it's all around for the team. Enjoy your week off and we'll see you. We have two weeks in between, the week off for vacation and the fine week and then the meeting is the last week in October, which is completely off schedule for our usual, second is fourth Wednesday. No, it's the fourth Monday, everyone. This one we're doing before. So we'll be back on track.